Next, I'd like to call to order the joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency for March 22, 2011. And we have roll call for the council, please.
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Weaver.
Here.
Aaron Najarian.
Here.
Roll call for...
Roll call for the agency, please.
Agency members, Draymond.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Friedman.
Here.
Your report, please.
Currently, the agenda for the March 22, 2011, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was postponed Thursday, March 17, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
First item, please.
One is public hearing, Director of Public Works and Community Development regarding parking standards in downtown specific plan. And one A is council resolution adopting a negative declaration. One B is ordinance for introduction amending Title 30 relating to parking amendments in the DSP zone. One C is ordinance for introduction adding Chapter 1.26 pertaining to administrative citations for violations of certain provisions of Title 30 and transportation demand and parking in lufies. The D is council resolution adopting parking in lufies for the DSP area. And E is a council resolution adopting a schedule of civil fines for administrative citations.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing and go to Mr. Starbuck.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll ask Mike Nelson, mobility planner with community development, to introduce the item with staff report. Michael?
Good afternoon, members of the city council. Today, we are presenting draft code language, fee resolutions, and environmental analysis related to amending parking standards within the downtown specific plan area. This is an ordinance being considered for introduction today. The ordinance being presented to you this afternoon has been part of a two-and-a-half year effort collaborating with stakeholders, staff, commissioners, and council members to implement parking management recommendations in the downtown mobility study, a companion document to the downtown specific plan adopted by council in 2006. These amendments help realize the downtown specific plan's vision for vibrant, walkable downtown. Some highlights of the code amendments include reducing the minimum parking requirements for residential and some commercial uses. It also includes opportunities to satisfy parking requirements through paying an in-lu fee and allowing tandem and mechanically stacked parking to count towards parking requirements. It also allows opportunities to further reduce parking requirements through transportation demand management programs such as car pools, van pools, ride shares, transit passes, and Transportation Management Association membership, with requirements for new large-scale commercial and residential projects to join transportation management associations and conduct transportation demand management programs. It also increases exemption to provide parking for existing change-of-use businesses from 2,000 to 5,000 square feet, which covers most of the parking exceptions granted in downtown over the past five years. With these incentives, we have proposed greatly reducing the need for discretionary parking reductions through removing the parking exception process for the downtown specific plan area. However, the existing variance, parking reduction permit, and parking use permit processes will still be available as discretionary options to reduce parking in the DSP area. Per council's recommendations, we have also added a provision in the ordinance to projects that have already reduced their parking under the state Affordable Housing Density Bonus Law to not be eligible for downtown parking incentives proposed today. The code language has also been updated to reflect the input from planning commissioners and transportation and parking commissioners per their comments at the February 28, 2011 meeting. These comments include additional language for enforcement of in-lu fee and transportation demand management requirements, and that's reflected in the fee resolutions and fee ordinance presented today. And a more detailed explanation of the transportation demand management programs, and specifically how they're eligible for parking reductions, has also been passed out this afternoon on the dais. This concludes staff's presentation. Bonnie Nelson from Nelson Nygaard is also available to answer any questions regarding code changes and policies in further detail if council is interested.
Thank you. So you're going to hand it off to Bonnie?
Yes, sir.
Can you go through these ordinances for us and just give us a summary again as to what you did, what you're presenting to us for introduction? Let's start with the...
Mr. Mayor, sorry, before you start, I wasn't sure if you opened the hearings, so if you haven't...
I did.
Okay, good.
Right off the bat. Okay, we're talking about in-lufies.
Correct.
We're talking about change of use increasing from 2,000 to 5,000.
Yes.
And the idea behind this all is to set down a series of rules so that everyone doesn't come to us and ask us for the parking variances and parking exceptions that we invariably end up hearing, sometimes on a routine, sometimes on a special case basis.
I think, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned it exactly. That's the number-one purpose, to streamline the process. It really reflects a lot of the procedures that we have followed over the past several years. It's all in one code. And it also connects, all of these policies are connected to the Greater Downtown Mobility Study policies that they work hand-in-hand to implement some of the other pieces that you have been discussing for the past few years, including the in-lufies. In other words, now there's a mechanism, if you reduce parking for, to get something in lieu of that, if the parking use permit, which is the use of off-site parking, is not used, or if there is no justification for reducing the parking standards for a particular developer, there's a new mechanism introduced that now allows the staff to make recommendations to the council agency to consider those.
Okay, let's talk about the in-lu, because I've received a phone call today from a stakeholder whose complaint was that the $24,000 per space in-lu fee is too high, that it should be set lower, and that should council see that there's an excessive amount of use of this in-lu fee program, that it then be raised up.
I am going to ask Bonnie Nelson to really actually address the fees, because that's the one-time in-lu fee for every parking space that's forever given.
Right.
I believe you have in the staff report for this item a chart that we developed that shows how the $24,000 fee would stack up against other peer cities. And as you can see, you are definitely not the highest in this chart. The 24,000 is approximately the average of the fees that have been updated in recent years. So some of those that are at the low end, if you can see on that chart, some of those that are at the low end are fees that have not updated in quite a long time. And in fact, cities that have very low fees that don't update often run into problems where the fee is simply too low. At 24,000, we are also recommending that the fee increase with inflation so that you don't have to come back for new ordinance every time you have an inflationary cost. And that will put you at about the mean of what we would consider the modern one-time fees for in-lu spaces. I don't consider it too high because the cost, this is in lieu of building a parking space. The cost of building a parking space, particularly if you're building subterranean in Glendale, can be 50,000 to 80,000 a space, depending on how far you have to go to build that parking space. So by doing an in-lu at 24,000, there's a benefit to the developer to not have to build that, and a benefit to the city to be able to accumulate some funding to eventually allow you to build more parking if necessary.
Okay, does this save us from the developers who want to come back up? Last in-lu fee we had was for affordable housing. And we were, several memorable requests for waiving of the in-lu fee or lowering the in-lu fee. Setting this figure at 24,000 and implementing this ordinance doesn't protect us from any individual developer coming in and saying, you know what, that's too high, I want to pay 10,000 a space in-lu. I mean, it sets our goals and priorities and our target.
A developer can ask, any new developer can ask for anything they want, I suppose, but the in-lu fee is only one tool. What we've tried to do is to offer a variety of tools. So a developer who feels that the parking requirement cannot be met on-site has a number of tools. They can do a shared parking arrangement, they can do off-site parking, they can reduce their parking demand through demand management, and/or they can pay the in-lu fee. So we've given a menu of options to really incentivize economic development downtown without penalizing people who want to shop, work, and travel downtown. The in-lu fee is only one of those tools. I can't stop a developer from coming to you with any kind of a request, but we've hopefully given enough options in the menu here that you will be able to come to an agreement.
I might add this, a couple of things. One, procedurally, the fact this is adopted by ordinance means that in order to amend it, you'd have to go through an ordinance amendment, which procedurally is going to be a few more steps than you'd normally do if you were just able to come to the city council and ask for a waiver, say. Secondly, my biggest concern is that we may miss the mark too low. And indeed, then you'll have some major developments when the economy comes back that will see it as an economic incentive, especially with subterranean parking, to not build their parking and instead give the city the responsibility for that. I'm more concerned this may be too low than this may be on the high side. In the end, if it's on the high side, you will hear from developers very quickly. If it's on the low side, frankly, we won't. We'll just have a big project come in, they'll ask for an in-lu, and then we'll realize it's costing us far more to build it than we're going to be getting back out of it. At that point, you'll learn because you had your first one come in, and you'll be incurring a loss on it. So 24,000 is generally what we think of as about the construction cost of subterranean parking. Now, that doesn't include the land value. If you're building subterranean, you're having to acquire the land anyway. But if somebody's doing surface parking, indeed, you haven't accounted for the land value in this, although this construction value may be higher, certainly than what it normally costs you to build surface parking. But most of these that we see where we're asked for waivers is where they're having to go multi-layers of subterranean. The farther down they go, the more it costs per space to build. So there's a large incentive to get down below two, two-and-a-half, three layers. There's a large incentive to ask for an in-lu because it gets very expensive.
Would these funds be earmarked and put in a special account for future parking structure?
They would be part of the parking, the downtown parking fund, and they are allocated towards either building new parking or towards other projects that would reduce the demand for parking. So it's all parking-related.
Let me add to that. I don't know if it's addressed in the ordinance, but I think we'd also want to have a system where we're keeping track of this on a rather large territory-by-territory basis. So we're looking for funds produced in, say, the downtown area to eventually go to producing parking in the downtown area.
Right, that's right.
In terms of the timing of implementation, assuming this is adopted, would this affect something like the theater lofts project?
The theater lofts project would probably not be affected by this, but there are other mechanisms in the code that we can use right now.
And I might add, you'll have a separate development agreement on the theater lofts project, which will address all of the various aspects of that project, including parking.
That's right.
Give me an example of how this would be applied, the Broadway Lofts?
Well, let's use an example. Let's use one of the projects that may come back, but for now, it's one of those that fell off the map as a result of the economic downturn. Either, let's take the project at Joanne's Fabrics. They might very well have requested an in-lu. They were going to be subterranean, housing based on our previous housing standards, which now they may be getting some level of relief on that. But they might have come in and asked for some in-lu payments for a portion of their parking on-site because they were going subterranean, and they might have requested some level of a number of spaces, say, that if they were going down three, maybe they only wanted to go down two, and they would have wanted to pay in-lu on the balance of that. If it made economic sense for them, and if from a service standpoint, they felt their project could be successful while not having all of the parking on-site.
Do we have a limit? And let's say...
Yes, 50%.
50% is...
No more than 50% of the parking requirements could be met through in-lu.
Right.
And then another thing that I might add is that I think your question, your original question, Mr. Mayor, is really a good one, and for those developers who might be watching...
Off your sets. All the developers turn off your sets.
Just by, yes, they can ask for everything, but they should still show that they're eliminating the parking impacts, because the full in-lu fee will assume that they have eliminated the full parking impact per in-lu fee. However, if they ask for waivers, they will still have to eliminate the parking impact.
Through another, through other means.
Through some other means, whether they, yes, they need to show that there's no parking impact. And that is subject to our review still.
spoken enough, colleagues, or...
Yes, thank you. If you will indulge me, I have a number of questions. I think you may have asked a few of them. This is only in order of the staff report. My first one is on page four, and it's about the parking incentive reduction based on proximity to transit, based on, you know, the state, what is it, AB? What is that actual? Doesn't matter. Whatever that, whatever the state incentives give them to be close to transit.
SB 1818.
1818. So I'm a little confused because we're limiting that ability, or are we only limiting the city of Glendale's transit bonus? Or do we have the mechanism to also limit the state?
There are two separate thoughts here. One is, in the original proposal, we had identified a parking reduction, a reduction in parking requirement for being close to regional transit. One of the comments that we got back from the commissions was that transit in Glendale currently is not at a sufficient level that you could really give a parking reduction for being close to regional transit. In the future, there may be transit improvements that would allow that to happen. So we've taken that out of the ordinance. The issue with SB 1818 is that developers under that provision, which is a provision that provides for lower-income housing, get certain benefits as a part of that, one of which is parking reduction. We don't want to double up and double-count those benefits by giving...
That's what I thought.
And so that was one of the comments that came from council at our last meeting. We've just made it so you can't double those benefits.
Okay, so they still have the benefits under the state, under state law?
Absolutely.
And likely have to pick and choose which one they want to come under.
Correct.
They want to work with us on the incentives, or they want to come in under 1818. But you can't get double coupons on this.
Okay. The amendment to raise the parking exemption for change-of-use within the downtown specific plan zone from 2,000 to 5,000 square feet for taverns, general office, et al. My question is, why are we... Where am I with that one? We're raising the limit of size. That's fine.
Why is that, if I could take up on that?
Many of the historic storefronts on brand are in the range of between 2,000 and 5,000, and we want to really help small businesses that want to acquire that storefront next door, or that want to open a storefront that's a little bit more than 2,000. Many of those changes in use have come before you in terms of exceptions, and actually, a significant percentage of the exceptions that you give are exactly for that purpose. So we wanted to say that by right, up to 5,000 square feet, you can have an exception. That will allow those historic storefronts on brand to stay occupied.
Can I just, can I add a comment to that, though? And this was a concern I expressed. This same provision came up several years ago when we last visited our parking standards. And I expressed this same concern then. For some of these uses, such as the gymnasiums and health clubs, if under that you can have the 24-hour fitness-type operation that could be rather intense, I get a little concerned about by right for those kinds of uses that can go from 2,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet and by right not have to address the parking impacts. Now, for many of these uses, maybe it's not a concern, maybe it's okay in the downtown area. But for something that may be a rather intensification of a use, and again, we know from 24-hour fitness that they can consume a tremendous amount of parking, I just thought for some of these kinds of uses, we need to be very cautious about how we give a by-right provision, which means you don't have the ability, if it doesn't work, except to go back and change it for the next ones coming in, but you'll be stuck with those uses forever if they become problematic.
How large is 24-hour fitness? Are they over 5,000 square feet?
Oh, I think they must be.
Because I mean, in my mind, that's sort of why, in my mind, that's sort of why we
have that 5,000-square-foot limit, because I don't think a use that's 5,000 square feet and under is at as much risk of generating that kind of intense use. So for the larger uses that are the more intense uses, we'd still have the ability to look at those on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
I agree, and for most of the uses, I wouldn't be overly concerned. Frankly, eliminating gymnasiums and health clubs, however, in the downtown area, I'm not sure that, like restaurants and entertainment establishments and maybe even offices, that they bring you the kind of benefit that you'd want to see in a downtown in some of the older buildings, that you can still give them, you could still exempt them from it or give it a waiver, but at least you'd be able to look and see what is their intensification.
Let me finish my questions, and maybe we can take that up a little bit later. So in terms of the portion that allows a change-of-use to satisfy 100% of required parking, and for new construction to satisfy 50%, it makes sense for me to have that 50% limit in uses that are things like residential and maybe large-scale commercial. But if someone's building a small 5,000-square-foot store in the downtown, we don't have a lot of that kind of infill, but we could. Why, then, can't they have the same benefit that other storefront merchants have of not having to have that parking?
The 2,000 to 5,000-square-foot rule is true for all. The 50% applies only to tandem and stacked spaces. And the reason to keep that to 50% is that in commercial establishments, you generally want independent movement. You want people to be able to get in and out of parking spaces without having to jostle other cars.
I'm looking at the paragraph that talks about the annual fee for change-of-use.
Oh, I'm sorry, and that...
Sorry, I didn't make that clear.
In the in-lu, in the in-lu. So why should new...
3032-172.
Right, and that's actually referring to the in-lu fee. And the reason is that we don't want to allow developers to be able to in-lu 100% of their parking. There are other techniques that they could use, including off-site parking, shared parking, other techniques, but we don't want them to be able to simply write a check and get out of the requirement to provide new parking when they are providing, when they are adding significantly to parking demand.
Okay, that makes sense. In the very next paragraph, you talk about the 600 per year per parking space. Is that for the property owner to pay or the tenant to pay? Or doesn't it matter?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. And then how is that enforced? I know you talked about municipal ordinances, but is that, is it realistic that we would be able to enforce that on an ongoing basis?
Madam Chair, what we've done, one of the ordinances that's part of this packet is administrative citation process, specifically for this particular fee, because I think we had a similar concern. They have to pay the annual fee the first time at the time of their ZUC or their building permit, and then after that, pay it on a yearly basis. And if they don't, we would be using this administrative citation process to enforce that. So that way, we don't have to go through the more traditional code enforcement process to enforce it.
And you're confident that that would be satisfactory, that would bring them into compliance? Okay. Now, you did mention that the 20, you're recommending, and I think it must be in here somewhere that I didn't see, that the $24,000 per space in-lu fee goes up according with the rate of inflation or a yearly basis. What about the $600 per year parking space? Does it also...
Yes, those fees will adjust.
Sorry, I have to...
No problem.
Actually navigate electronically through this thing.
Least expensive way to navigate. You don't need a travel agent.
Don't need a travel agent. Some of these are redundant questions. Okay, so we talked about the density bonus. Okay, that's all my questions for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have some cards from the public. If no one don't want to go in, come in later. Rick Lemo?
Just walked out.
Okay, Dennis Di Pietro?
Good afternoon, council members and agency members. Rick had to leave, so he added the voice. We are in support of Americana and speaking as a property owner and as an architect and as a former member of several of the public committees that have been involved in these earlier processes with zoning and so on, we're speaking in favor of the council, the agency adopting the resolution for this parking. It seems like it's another step forward in the whole process of trying to streamline the process and trying to make the development process a little bit more dynamic, powering more of the staff and being able to make these kinds of decisions that are wise, and allowing developers and current property owners to dynamically use their property. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a... Just one question. This is only, then, for the downtown specific plan? It would not extend any further than the DSP?
This is for the downtown specific plan area only, and will have no impact outside of the DSP.
If someone adjacent to the DSP said, that's a great idea, please let us have availability of such similar...
I'm sure you will see them standing where I am.
In-lu, or tandem, or mechanical stacking?
We expect that those types of requests will come in, but like everything else, that with every new idea that we have wanted to experiment with, we have usually introduced them in downtown. Then we have all tested and tried them with your supervision on them. And when time comes to expand some of these policies citywide, we will all have a certain level of comfort at this point. You know, we are not ready to recommend them for across the city. But in the future, I'm sure, at least in certain commercial areas, we might want to consider them.
All right. Thank you. I don't have any other cards. I will close the public hearing. And these are ordinances for introduction. They all counsel.
They're all council ordinances, and you have a couple resolutions.
So Weaver, for...
For introducing...
Yes.
Ordinances? Sure, let's see.
If we could, right, if we could adopt at least...
You want to do A first.
One A, so we have...
I'll move one A first, that's the neg deck.
For a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Hi.
Aaron.
Yes.
I'll introduce the ordinances at one B and C, noting that these ordinances can always be amended in the future due to public request, which will probably come forth someday. And I'll move one D and E resolutions.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Hi.
Aaron Najarian.
Yes.
Your next item.
Item two is also a public hearing, Director of Community Development regarding Museum of Neon Art Project Mona to be located at 212 through 216 South Brand Boulevard. At two A is an agency resolution approving a lease agreement with Mona and Health and Safety Code Section 33433 summary report. B is a council resolution approving a lease agreement with Mona and Health and Safety Code Section 33433 summary report. C is agency motion approving stage one and stage two design review subject to comments and conditions. D is an agency motion approving sign variances based on findings and conditions. E is council resolution making Health and Safety Code Section 33445 findings and determination. F is agency resolution making Health and Safety Code Section 33445 findings and determination. G is a council resolution approving a cooperation agreement with the agency. H is agency resolution approving a cooperation agreement with the city.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing. DeBose?
Members of the city council and the redevelopment agency, the next two items are being presented to you together as they help implement a vision that was actually set into motion back in the mid-'90s through the Greater Downtown Strategic Plan. You may recall that that plan had envisioned a town center district in the downtown, the southern end of the downtown, with the west side of Brand Boulevard being developed as a regional retail center, and the east part of Brand Boulevard, the eastern part of the town center district, to be developed as a series of civic-related uses, which included a new adult recreation center, renovation of the Central Park, renovation of the Central Library, and potentially museums and pedestrian spaces. In 2000, pardon me, when the agency was acquiring property for the town center project, now the Americana, the agency also acquired a series of properties on the east side of Brand Boulevard with the vision of implementing a pedestrian passageway on that side. And you may recall that in 2009, the agency reconfirmed some of the principles that had guided the strategic plan back in '95 through, pardon me, through an adopted master plan, which helped us guide the development of the Mona Building as well as the proposed pedestrian passageway. At some point, I will turn over the mic to our urban designer, Mr. Alan Loomis, to refresh your memories of some of the guiding principles behind the master plan. But before I do that, there's, I just wanted to outline some of the items that are before you, put them within a context. In terms of Mona, the Museum of Neon Art, Ms. Kim Koga, the executive director, along with the board, Ms. Kathy Foley, Annette Johnson, and Mr. David Svensson are all here, and they're anxious to express their excitement. However, they have to be patient with us as we have sort of a mini-presentation... home. The museum seemed to be very consistent with what had been envisioned with the Greater Downtown Strategic Plan, as the demographics are consistent with those that are currently at the Americana, shopping at the Americana, but they're also giving them an extended stay when they come to visit the Americana and the downtown Glendale. They also, Mona, its existence as a museum also helps us anchor the Arts and Entertainment District at the southern end and potentially will help us activate the proposed passageway. What's exciting about Mona, and I'm leaving this for them to touch on, are the community programming that they will be sharing with the, with the, with the community once they come onboard. Before you, is a ground lease, pardon me, ground lease agreement, and Mr. Mark Berry is here, who has been the project manager negotiating and finalizing that agreement. If you have specific questions about the lease terms, I will turn the mic over to Mark to answer those. However, I'd like to reiterate that the business terms are very consistent with the letter of intent that was adopted, I believe, September of 2009 between the agency and Mona. Prior to approving the ground lease agreement, the agency by law has to review and adopt some findings, specifically 33433 and 33445 findings, and our legal counsel can definitely answer questions related to those findings. And finally, the passageway is envisioned to be activated by Mona and potentially connect our visitors at the Americana and south part of Brand Boulevard to all the rich civic uses we have on the, on the east side. As you know, the Adult Recreation Center was a, the new facility was completed a few years ago. Our Parks Department is working on revamping the Central Park area. The Central Library is in the process of retaining an architect to redefine the purpose of the reading room and its, the reorientation of the entrance and the access to the, to the Central Library. Going back to the ground lease for a quick moment, I forgot to mention that based on the ground lease terms, the agency is required to provide some shell improvements to the building before turning the building over to Mona. And those improvements are limited to structural, HVAC system, plumbing, and electrical upgrades. There is another item that's on, before you, and I think in a nutshell, it has to do with land swap with the owners of the property that are at the south end of the block at the corner of Colorado and, and Brand Boulevard. That specifically relates to a DSP envisioned improvements along Central Avenue to introduce a right-turn lane at that corner. When Central Avenue was improved almost a year and a half ago with street trees, street lights, new sidewalks, that right-turn lane wasn't implemented because the city did not have control of that property. The property owners at that, at that corner have approached staff with an idea of doing a land swap where the almost 12 feet that's needed to accommodate that right-turn lane could be, could be accommodated to the city with swapping a 12-foot parcel almost equal in size along the alley. The designers have looked at that, and it seems to be working just fine with the proposed design that will be presented in a moment to you. It also helps complete that right-turn lane as envisioned by the DSP. And furthermore, it helps the developer, gives them the opportunity to redevelop this and provide parking onsite. The agency retained the services of Joey Shimoda with Shimoda Design Group to address the Mona building. And in a moment, upon Alan Loomis's presentation, Joey will present to you the stage one and two design for the, for the building. And the agency also retained the services of AECom, and we have Mr. Von Davies, who will present the proposed design for the passageway. At this point, unless you have specific questions about some of the housekeeping items, there are several items before you, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Loomis to refresh your memories about some of the guiding principles for that block, and then we'll proceed through the presentation.
Will we have a graphic in the presentation?
Yes. Unfortunately, I wasn't allowed any graphics, so you have my pretty face to do the talking. And then they want to reserve the graphics for their purposes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's our cue to, for the projector, the graphics. I don't have much to add to what Emile has offered, other than I have a few visuals to sort of describe everything that he said. This image is an old familiar friend at this point, and, and you can see down at the lower right is the Central Park. This is a view sort of looking above the Americana, down on the Art and Entertainment District of Maryland with Central Park on the right. There, one of the key ideas of the Central Park master plan is this east-west connection that would align with Caruso Avenue, cross the park to connect with the Adult Recreation Center and the neighborhood beyond, and then a north-south connection, as Emile mentioned, that could pass through the central reading room of the library, linking the Central Park that east-west passage with Maryland Avenue and the Art and Entertainment District. The Central Park master plan that was adopted and directed in 2009 really had four basic phases. The first phase is the, in effect, the Adult Recreation Center, which at that time was complete. That's the one highlighted there in orange. The next phase, which is the item you're considering today, is the realignment and landscaping of the north-south alley behind properties on Brand Boulevard, as well as that the east-west passage from Brand to the alley. As Emile mentioned, the second phase is renovations and landscape work related to the Central Library. Emile mentioned that we, and the staff report mentions that we are actually interviewing consultants this coming, this coming month, and we'll be back to you with a proposal a firm to recommend later this year. And then finally, another phase is the actual landscaping of the park itself. So just to remind you, these are the sort of upcoming phases that we are anticipating related to sort of bringing the Central Park entirely together and connecting it with the Art and Entertainment District and the Americana at Brand. Today, what you're considering is just this area highlighted in orange. The first piece will be the consideration of the building on Brand Boulevard for the Museum of Neon Art. That'll be Joey Shimoda's presentation. And the second half is all the landscape work surrounding it, which would be by Von Davies from the firm AECom. I want to note before I introduce these two architects that I think we gave them something of a shotgun wedding, and they performed quite admirably in that many times to ensure the maximum degree of coordination between two separate projects. So with that, I'm finished, and we'll turn the mic presentation over to Joey to discuss the Museum of Neon Art proposed design.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the City Council. I'd like to start out by thanking all of you for giving us the opportunity to work with the City of Glendale, with all of you on the council and the City Redevelopment Agency. The experience, even though it's been maybe a year and a half to two years, has actually been a really great one. We are concentrating our project on the address of 212 and 216 Brand Boulevard, and it is a new civic building that we're proposing for the, the community. The ideas behind the building really are about a celebration of light and architecture and art. And so all the elements that we've included in the project always revolve around that element of light. But it's not only a civic building. The way we've designed it, we have an ability for it to become a multi-use building. It can have many lifetimes in terms of being another cultural building or as a participant in the entertainment district. It can certainly become an office. It could become a restaurant. It could become regular retail. I'd like to point out three key features of the building, which, the first is what we're calling the Icon, which is a 19-foot neon lit sculpture called the Diver. We envision that element to become a permanent piece on the building, and like the marquee on the Alex Theater, this will help anchor this block as a, as a major sort of cultural element. The next item I want to talk about is what we call the Lantern, which is a glass box that's floating out over the passageway and onto Brand Boulevard. The notion here is, is that this glass box is not, does not have a floor, but it'll always function as a image of art and of light in the community. Third element that I want to talk about is the large amount of storefront that we provided. We want to make sure and encourage that the use of the building during the day and during the evening is inviting and one that's adaptable to other types of uses. I'd like to go over with you a little bit about the master planning of the project because this is a renovation project and not a ground-up project. So we have a little bit of surgery to do to this existing building facade. This is how it currently exists, except now the blue awnings are gone and the building has been painted. So as a graphic, the building looks a little bit more like this. The first step we're going to do is remove a portion of the building, about 50 feet of it, to be able to create the passageway. The views that we're taking this from are from the Americana side. Now, what you'll notice is we're able to create a new opportunity on this facade to have open openings and participation into the passageway. The next step that we're going to do is we're going to remove the first 27 feet of the building in order to create a brand-new image for the building. But what's not noticeable in this, this image is that we're actually trying to retain about 70% of the existing structure so that we can concentrate all of our resources into making the biggest impact to the public. This building is an aerial, this view is an aerial perspective of the project, and what I want to call your attention to here is how the lantern, and also we've created a little box on the smaller building side that gives a variety to the Brand Boulevard frontage, which makes it appear to be more than multiple, more like multiple buildings. But we also have the ability to create new storefront and frontage along the passageway. The other element is a large operable door that we believe will be able to link the interior activities of the building with the passageway. And in this slide best illustrates some of the signage variances we're asking for, the first one being for the large neon sign, some additional signage on the street naming the tenant, the signage along the side, which currently we're showing a Manny, Mo, and Jack sign, but we're really talking about this whole area as becoming a rotating opportunity for cultural signage. This is the typical floor plan of the building, and what I want to call your attention to on this slide is the fact that we have multiple access points along Brand, the Paseo, as well as a large access point along and toward the rear of the Paseo. But as you can see, it's a very large floor plate that we can divide in many different ways and can accommodate a very, a multitude of uses. Final slide I'd like to show you is how we hope at the final, when it's all built, that we've created this, this beautiful luminous building that becomes an anchor to the Entertainment District to the south, but also becomes a beacon for this block. It becomes a signifier. But most importantly, that it becomes the bridge that unifies all of the rich retail activity along Brand to the Glendale Library, to the Adult Recreation Center, and to the new passageway. And with that, I'll introduce Von Davies of AECom to tell you a little bit more about the passageway and the alley improvements.
Thank you, Joey. Thank you very much for having us join you this afternoon to walk through the alley, the passageway. This is a really great opportunity for the building, as Joey's mentioned, to glow as a lantern at nighttime, but also to be a great part of the street life during the day and encourage the Brand Avenue, the sidewalk paving in Brand Avenue to really continue through the passageway and ultimately to the alleyway beyond and hopefully into the civic space of the Central Park as well. We've divided the space into essentially two edges. There is the edge on the north side, which we occupied by spillover events in a café or exhibit space onto a wooden deck from the gallery spaces in this area, and a very gracious, slow-rising ramp on this side to provide ADA accessibility up through into the Central Park area, which will also have café space available on the south side, and a very simple elegant wall on both sides that can accept exhibits from the Mona exhibits that are internal that might become external as well. And a very simple shaded area in the middle, street, street trees, again, that continue inside, so taking a lot of the elements from the sidewalk through the space, and then a central small fountain that really provides a sense of respite and quiet from the street space as you enter this room. So really a room that is both for small functions, for informal relaxing, but as well as events that might happen during the day and in the evening for both the café and Mona themselves. This is a ground-level view looking back from the alleyway, so moving towards the library. You see the exhibit space, the wood deck, the small shallow pool that we have as a reflecting pool to pick up the night light from the neon, which we think would be a wonderful reflective quality in this space as well. And then moving further back towards the, the library, this is a point in the alleyway where the alleyway crosses over the passage. We want to extend the passage as far forward as we can into the garden space of the Central Park area, a great civic place, a place to drop people off for events at the library or A R C or in the Central Park itself if there are events that happen in the park. So it becomes a place of arrival, could be illuminated at night as well as a great civic space. The scale gets a little bit grander and more civic as you move through it. Very simple plan. We've tried to keep it, not introduce too many new elements. This is a simple sidewalk paving from the Brand Boulevard that comes through, the wood deck that you see as wood adjacent to the Mona and on the fence here as well, simple palm trees that pick up some of the palms that exist in Central Park as well, and the beginning of what you see is the alleyway, which has been tidied up as part of the beginning of the civic center and civic Central Park, eventually to wrap the entire Central Park by a simple alley that could be for strolling or jogging, adding a row, extra row of trees, taking out the double lanes of traffic that exists, or the separate lanes of traffic and parking, and combining it as one, essentially a normal streetscape with parking against the retail stores at the back and perpendicular parking for people who are using the A R C in the library and garden space at the north side. You heard earlier a little bit about the land swap. If this is something that we're in agreement with, this is where the additional lane is required on Colorado to come through, and currently the property line extends out into that. The notion would be to provide air rights over the alleyway, over the parking and sidewalk as well as below grade so that this parcel on the corner could make up the space that is lost on, on Colorado compensated both above grade and below grade in this area and still keep the passageway and alleyway intact.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to Kim Koga, I forgot to mention in my portion of the presentation that there is a request for a sign variance before you, and that's specific to the Mona building, given that many of the signage that's proposed for the building are considered non-accessory per the zoning code, which means that they're not advertising the business inside, their signage of plumbing business or Manny, Mo, and Jack. As such, there is a variance request before you. At this point, if I may ask Kim Koga to present their proposed community programming to you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Nijarian and council members. I'm Kim Koga. As the director of Mona since 1999 and an artist working in neon, I'm really pleased to be here today to encourage your support for the Mona project in Glendale. This year, 2011, marks our 30th year as a museum, having curated and installed over 200 exhibits of art, signs, and photography, all relating to neon electricity and kinetics. For three decades, Mona has contributed to the arts and culture of the Los Angeles area, creating an awareness and an appreciation for its rich legacy of neon signs and educating and entertaining the public with our unique art form. We look forward to the opportunity to create new and expand existing programming specifically for the City of Glendale. Examples of such programming would include self-guided tours of historic Glendale neon, past and present. In addition to showing the history of Glendale through its signage, the tour would acquaint a new audience to the city and businesses that make up the city itself. Tri-city tours would include the larger Glendale-Burbank and North Hollywood areas. A continuation of our jazz-inspired First Friday Music Series, but with expanded dates during the month, so a First Friday and Beyond Series to include other types of music as well. Participation in the citywide open studio art tours. An annual film series to be screened at the Alex Theater with a focus on the use of neon in film. A mobile neon classroom that can be brought to schools that would include demonstrations and explanations of what neon is and how it works. This could be a supplement to the science and art curriculum. And finally, Lumens on Brand, a program of creating historic illuminated signs or identifying an existing, or identifying existing signs and helping to refurbish them, and a display of our automobile-related neon signs and neon art in the median- and explanations of what neon is and how it works. This could be a supplement to the science and art curriculum. And finally, lumens on Brand, a program of creating historic illuminated signs or identifying an existing, or identifying existing signs and helping to refurbish them, and a display of our automobile-related neon signs and neon art in the median or inside one of the auto dealerships on Brand Boulevard of Cars. With your support, we look forward to making these and other programs a reality in Glendale. Thanks.
Is there someone who wanted to follow Catherine or Kathy Foley? And David Svensson?
I'm Kathy Foley Meyer, and I'm the Mona Board Member who's probably been most closely involved with this process from the beginning. I was actually with Kim when we made our first presentation to the city, and at that meeting with the redevelopment agency, everyone became so excited that we actually jumped into a van driven by Jim Starbird, and we went down and we looked at the property the same day. And then, we came back about a month later, and I presented a slate of programs. I'd like to thank the City Council first off for this opportunity and the redevelopment agency, and also say that it's been a real pleasure working with Mark Berry and Emil and Phil and Gillian and everyone at the agency. I'm a graphic designer and an artist, and Mona has actually been an integral part of my development as an artist. Kim and I have looked at a lot of buildings together, everything from warehouses in the toy district to basement space in the jewelry district. I even looked at an empty Greyhound bus depot on my own in Pasadena. But as we began to look at buildings, I realized that we need more than a building. You know, we actually need a community that welcomes us and can really appreciate what Mona has to offer. So, and we really believe that we found that with Glendale. So, just wanted to say thank you very much.
David Svensson?
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, it's a, I am a board member, neon artist. I was here last year speaking to you introducing Mona. Our group has done a great presentation to you. I come to Mona as a neon artist and an educator in neon. I've been teaching neon at the Academy of Art University in San Francisco for 11 years. I just see how students of all ages just really become alive with this medium. We've sort of been emphasizing the historical signage that we have in our collection and you guys have in your community. But neon is this natural material that is just fantastic to expose children, young adults, to physics, electronics, and chemistry, and I just see how that can help in educating our youth. And I just want to thank all of you for getting this far with Mona, and I, in, over the year, I've learned to appreciate your community. I'm impressed by the cleanliness and efficiency with retail dealers on Brand Avenue and so forth. My wife is Japanese and from Japan, where things are kept quite tidy and pride in their culture. I just see that happening here in Glendale, and she was very impressed by this as well. So, I just want to thank all of you for this opportunity for Mona and for Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Party, these are for this item?
Yes.
Net Johnson? Joy Foyer?
Good afternoon, members of the council and the agency. My name's Annette Johnson. I'm also a Mona Board Member for about the past four years, and I also want to thank you and commend you for your vision and for including Mona in that vision. I actually lived in Glendale in the early 80s, and at that time, my father-in-law was working on the doctor's house, which is in Brand Park, and I saw that restoration go through, and you have that beautiful amenity there. And it just shows the long history that you have of this public-private partnership, and it's really what it takes for something like Mona to have a permanent home in a community working together. And I just think it's really great, and I'm excited to see it all come to fruition. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm up here today. My name is Joy Foyer. Hello, Laura. And I am a resident of Glendale. I'm an artist in Glendale, and I also have a nonprofit organization that many of you are familiar with called Art From the Ashes. And I'm a lover of the Museum of Neon Art from ways back, and I had the unique opportunity to actually get to know them and the space that we're all talking about today up close and personal over the last year when we hosted two different exhibitions for Art From the Ashes in June and once again in November, thanks to a very art-supportive city. You know who you are. And I just have to say, the one thing that was really amazing for the, you know, 12 weeks or so that we were in there, people would come in, and not only were they desperately seeking a destination for art, they were excited at the notion that a community space could be in the works. And I got the, you know, afforded to to talk about the Museum of Neon Art. There was neon in the windows, even though that was not our exhibition. You know, we're all connected, and so, of course, I took the opportunity to educate people what was happening in Glendale and the support and the vision. And I have to tell you that as an artist as well and somebody who loves to travel around and always investigate unique art, the one thing that I think is tremendous about Glendale is having such a unique museum here. You can't go to any city and have a Museum of Neon Art. So, it's not only going to be great for the community that's here, it's going to be great for people to travel here, and it's going to offer something new and different and unique, and I think make a statement about how we feel about the arts, which makes me feel incredibly joyful. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards on this item, so I will close the public hearing. Go to comments.
I have some questions. I have some questions, some for staff. I'll do those first, and then some for the designer. My first question is that we are renovating the building, and then there's an additional allowance up to $1 million to undertake tenant interior improvements. So, I'm wondering what the difference is in terms of our renovation and then why they need $1 million to do more renovations?
Oh, yes. Agency Chair Friedman, that's an excellent question, given that based on the ground lease agreement, we, the agency is obligated to bring the building to a standard to be occupied potentially by any future tenant. In this case, it's Mona. Those improvements include improvements to the structural system, upgrades to the, basically revamping the entire HVAC system, and installing new electrical and plumbing systems. The additional $1 million is an allowance for interior improvements that are specific to Mona, separate from the improvements that we are providing to the building. We are very cognizant that the improvements that are being done to the specific building potentially have a longer life that should Mona's future change, that building could potentially be occupiable by other retailer-commercial tenants.
You're saying that the money, that $1 million allowance, that money would be, that's invested in the property could be of use to future tenants if Mona was to leave?
No, that $1 million is specific to Mona for their tenant improvements prior to their occupying of the space.
Okay.
But the improvements?
The improvements to the shell of the building have a longer life.
I was just trying to understand the difference between the renovations that we were doing and then what they needed for their improvements, and why they were sort of two different budget items for that.
Maybe I can address that for you. Typically, how we're approaching the project in the different budget allotments is if you were, for say, a developer, you would provide a certain amount of infrastructure to a tenant, then the tenant would take that from a certain point and then finish out. In this specific case, some very simple examples would be HVAC. We would, in the base budget for development of the building, would put the unit on top of the building, but we would provide no distribution through the building or controls. So, part of Mona's cost for that would be to pay for the distribution and controls on the interior. Another example would be the restrooms. We would provide plumbing up to a certain point and a stubout into the floor, but Mona's budget would be responsible for putting in a toilet, putting in a fixture, putting in the room itself. And so, the difference between the allotments are that if you could imagine a completely empty shell that the city is providing, and then Mona's budget allows them to continue to fit out the shell.
So, if I can add to say that the improvement of the $1 million allowance would be paying for, would not be usable by a subsequent tenant, that may not be the case. They may actually be very usable by a subsequent tenant.
That's true.
It's just that they happen to be the kinds of interior improvements that if this were a pure private individual-to-private-business transaction, that the tenant would normally be responsible for. In this case, we're providing some additional assistance, but very likely restroom improvements, distribution of HVAC, given the open nature of the building, many of those improvements would be usable by a subsequent tenant.
Okay, thank you. That makes it a lot clearer to me. And then, I have a couple of questions for the landscape architect. And I'm sorry if these seem a little nitpicky.
Very happy to help.
I'd reopen the public hearing.
Again, I'm sorry if these seem nitpicky, but I just want to be clear about a few things. The cypress trees that you have, the potted cypress, don't those only get about five feet tall?
No, they, there are species that grow much taller than that, so these would be fairly iconic trees that would probably grow to about 30 feet ultimately.
Okay, that's great. I just wanted to be sure. The feather grass you have, isn't that a pretty invasive species of plant?
No, in the situation it's going to be in, it's going to be very controlled. There's, we're not in an open field where we're going to be having the grasses blowing all over the place, so.
But doesn't it spread by seed that blow around?
It does, but we have mostly, other than the specific areas they're planted in, there's going to be hardscape in most of the other areas.
So, you could guarantee us that it's not going to blow into the park behind it and become a problem for our maintenance crews?
No, we can't guarantee that. It's inevitable.
Okay, so, I would make a suggestion that maybe you find something that has no chance of becoming a maintenance issue for us later on with the park.
Fair enough.
And then, my last question, you'll be glad to hear, is about the palm trees. And, you know, just watching what we had to deal with with the winds and watching, as I do every year, as workers climb up 60 feet to try to trim palm trees, I just wonder if this is something that's going to cost us a lot more to maintain than other types of trees, because I think palm trees do when they get large. And secondly, and more importantly, I was just wondering if, given that it's a large area that we're hoping to have a lot of gatherings in, whether having trees that provide some shade would be more practical and comfortable for the people that are there.
I'll start with the shade. I think in the passageway itself, we do have shade trees. We're providing shade trees outside the gathering space for the for Mona.
I understand that, but in the area where you have the palm trees?
And the area where we have the palm trees really is a, it's a very heavily trafficked area, so we want to maintain some visibility for vehicles and people getting in and out of cars as well. We also want to create a sort of an iconic view in the landscape that when you're at Brand Avenue and looking across the street, you get the sense of these trees being illuminated at night. There's a certain statuesque-ness about them as they enter the other space. I think the, all trees and all landscape requires maintenance. There is no such thing in our minds as a maintenance-free tree, and I think we tend to overlook maybe all the maintenance that goes into making other trees really excel and grow to their full sort of pride. So, I don't think the palm trees necessarily, if they're maintained well, are going to become a hazard or anything more dangerous than any other tree, more of a hazard.
Okay, maybe at some point, I know Steve Zern's not here, but just want to be sort of convinced by him that what we pay to maintain the palm trees that are around the city are not significantly more expensive than to maintain other trees.
Not being a plant person, it probably depends on their ultimate height. I presume we're using, Dave has some comments, I presume we're using a palm that isn't going to grow to be the height that we see on some of the old city streets, but some that can be reached by a bucket, in which case, they may be maintained through our normal street tree program. Dave, you have any thoughts on it?
Members of the council, Mr. Starbird, the trees that are proposed are quite large in, with all the maintenance in this passageway, it's beyond what we normally maintain. The parks section will be maintaining the passageway along with the ARC park. So, it, the entire area is a larger maintenance program than we normally address in our parks. What we'll be doing and what we spoke with agency staff about in reviewing these plans is identifying a cost for maintenance of the overall site, including these trees. And then, we would probably contract that out with one of the firms that we use for trimming trees, Mariposa or one of the other firms, and it just depends on the frequency of maintenance for those trees. Because we do it on a citywide basis, we get a very competitive price. So, it's in our normal range of cost. Based on, you know, 15 to 1,500 to 2,000 trees, you get a little better price.
Okay. Yeah, these are the trees that get really big. My last question is probably for staff, and I'm not sure who it's for, but just in terms of the fountain, we do have fountains around the city that are dry, not right now because it's been raining, but when we're in a drought situation that have to be drained, including the one in Perkins Plaza, and I'm wondering if this fountain is using reclaimed water or is recirculating, or how we're going to deal with that, and if we are in a drought situation again in a few years, is this going to be dry?
I actually would like to defer to Mr. Davies to answer that question, because it's a very interestingly-designed fountain.
Thank you. We have been very cognizant about water and using as little water as we can, so we've really designed the fountain so that it can be a very elegant fountain, even if the water is not in it, and it provides a reflective surface with the tile work. It's only really about an inch thick, inch-deep of water that's really flowing and recycling throughout the pond and back into the space. So, if we need to be in a drought situation and empty the pond, we think it's still going to be a very elegant reflective surface that will catch the light from the neon in the evening, which is really the purpose, one of the purposes of it, and the other is to provide a little bit of water, white noise essentially from the traffic and the vehicles that might be trapped in the alleyway. So, we're cognizant of the fact that it needs to be dry, and if it, and if there are times when it is dry, it will still be an elegant feature, sculptural feature within the space.
Thank you very much.
While we're talking about design features, the, from the pictures, it looks like the flooring, is that a wood flooring?
Yes, we're wanting to do, on the one side, there's a wood deck, and it's very similar to what's at the Americana brand. If you walk around where the trolley goes at Americana, we're trying to use some of the palette of materials that's recently been introduced in downtown, and it's something we've used on other projects. They're very hard, very durable woods, and provides more of a familial space rather than a hard urban space outside, just outside of the museum space, so it'd be more of a party space or event space.
These are going to be coming up through the?
No, they will be in a separate planting bed that is carved out from that space adjacent to the benches.
Are we still in an open hearing or?
It's an open hearing, but pending any?
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, of staff.
Why don't we do that then?
The source of the funding?
Million dollars?
Agency funds at this point.
Redevelopment funds.
Redevelopment funds.
That's, that money is, this is considered high priority for the use of the monies other than other projects in the redevelopment zone?
That is a good question. I'd like to defer to.
The question, Mr. Weaver?
Is this the highest priority of the use of redevelopment funds at this time in the city? Putting a million dollars aside for this, what else is on the platter? I don't have the budget in front of me.
We have this programmed in with all of our other costs and expenses, programs, directions that you have given us. The funding for the project, and when I say the project, both the museum and the alleyway and pass-through, portion of that is bond-funded, a great portion of that of the alley and passageway, all of it is bond-funded specifically for that project. With respect to some of the other agency projects, this is something that we have brought to you and feel that it is your direction, that this be the southern anchor. Using art as an economic development tool, we think it is important in the revitalization or the vitalization of downtown.
So, the million dollars of tenant improvements are bonded money?
No, those are tax increment agency dollars.
Which could be used for other projects, but this is considered the highest priority at this time?
We have funding for the other projects that have been proposed, so it is.
You know, the state is up there talking about taking redevelopment dollars, so I'm trying to figure doing with what we have.
Can I try and respond to that? Your staff's view has been that Mona is a very high priority. If we were looking at what may be the end of funding of redevelopment, this is an area where we would. area where we would... This is an area where we would recommend you invest some of your last dollars, frankly, because we think it'll pay tremendous dividends to the city. Certainly in terms of, as Phil mentioned, sort of beginning to build this foundation of art and culture in the community, something I think the community and many people have asked for for many, many years. And secondly, in terms of potentially having the spin-off benefit of helping us activate the downtown, as well as bringing in a companion use for this passageway, then instead of having a very, pardon the phrase, passive passageway, that really doesn't serve as a magnet, except it just becomes a place to go from one area to another, this is a tremendous opportunity to activate that space. We've had lots of conversations with the Caruso company over the years, and he's been very concerned about the other side of Brand. I'll tell you, looking at the architect's renderings of what this could look like at night, and the activity level that we could see during the day, I sent Phil an email saying, we need to send Mr. Caruso the architect's renderings of what this could look like when it's all done, because I think it'll do a tremendous job of activating what has been a rather dead area of South Brand on that side of the street for a long, long time. Yes, redevelopment is under threat. We could find ourselves by the end of this week or next week with the state trying to end our redevelopment activities. My recommendation would be, I think this is a very wise investment for what may be some of the last income the redevelopment agency could have if the governor is successful.
One more question of staff.
A question, because I'll close the public hearing with...
Yeah, it's comments.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Now I'll go to Mr. Drayman.
All right, well, it's not a surprise that I support this project, I guess. So it's the most well-publicized secret, I guess. I'm very happy that we've been able to work with the board at Mona and to bring this project to our downtown. Some of the issues have been touched on just now by the city manager and also by Mr. Land and others. And I'm glad that the issue of priority was brought up. Where does this fit in our list of priorities? In the first place, the time I've been here anyway, which I admit is rather short, just one term, but I will tell you that in my time here, we have not sat down as an agency and said we prioritize our projects one, two, three, four, five, and six, that this project is more important than that project, and that project is more important than the next. And I think there's a reason for that. A city is not a business, and though some say, you know, we should run a city like a business, the arts are exceedingly important to this city and to any city. We have been without in this city, from a city-promoted standpoint, from our founding as a city to the present. I shouldn't say to the present, with the exception of the last couple of years, let's put it that way. If this city can be said to have a tradition with regard to the arts, it's that we have no tradition in the arts. We have never made it a priority. It has always been a luxury item. And I think in the last few years, we've been able to show that art as an economic development tool is very effective and very important, so much so that our retail development partners see it also and have supported this. And the, said before, we, the city of Glendale, may never see a museum where we see the great masters on the wall. We may never see the great French impressionists in our museums in Glendale. But I think we have an opportunity in bringing Mona to the city, in being able to leap bounds ahead of our neighbors in the region in terms of modern art, industrial art, and so on. Mona is not just a gallery either. Mona is also a very substantial collection of historic neon. And it isn't just about Manny, Mo, and Jack on the outside, about iconic landmarks and images from throughout Southland, in fact, throughout the country. This space is adaptable. This space, whether it is Mona or retail or another exhibit space, will activate this passageway. And what were we going to have prior to that? We were going to have a hundred-foot-wide opening between Brand Boulevard and the park. I know we all say in our presentation, this is going to be a passeo that will take us back to the Adult Recreation Center. I'm just wondering how much activity the Adult Recreation Center is going to bring a hundred-foot-wide passeo. I'm just trying to picture the flow of retail traffic out of the Americana across the street and off to the Adult Recreation Center. That isn't the purpose of that passeo, or if it is, then I missed something here as a Glendale resident. We need to activate that passageway, and this is the way to do it. Now, I want to add one other, one or two other things, Mr. Mayor. I think the design is fantastic, and I think that the architects are to be commended. Costs money, yes. And if we're ever going to invest in the arts in our downtown, we're going to have to spend some money. If we're ever going to put our mouths where our money is, or our money where our mouths are, this is the time to do it. And it is literally, possibly, the last time that we can do it. Lastly, I want to, it's a strange tangent, I want to just share with my colleagues and to a smaller extent, the public, that this project actually grew out of an ICSC conference. So there's something to be said for going to the Las Vegas conference. It was 2007 and my first trip to ICSC. And wanting to see more than just retail centers and meet with developers and see what the latest franchise restaurants were going to be and so on, and saw a notice in Las Vegas about their outdoor neon museum. And took a walk over there to see what it was. And at that time, it was just an interesting concept for moving people from one location to another via a neon corridor, although theirs is not specifically neon, although they bill it that way. And after the conference was over, I remember sitting on the dais, waiting to start one of our meetings, and we were chatting about it here, and the possibilities that that would have for Glendale. And then discovering that there was a neon museum in the LA, greater LA area, and seeing that on their website, they were looking for a permanent home. And trying to make contact and finding out, nope, they seem no longer to be looking for a permanent home. And then I believe it was through Jay, or Sanjay Platt, yeah, that a contact was made with Mona, and then began the process of acquainting them with us and vice versa. Glendale has a lot of galleries, private galleries, private art projects, programs. We have a terrific arts community in Glendale. It is diverse and dynamic and large in number. It's just, it's fantastic. But what's missing is some representation that Glendale as a city wants to invest itself in the arts, that Glendale as a city says that the arts are emblematic of what's in the heart and soul of this city. And the fact that we can bring that forward in a way that also stimulates the economy of the downtown and helps to continue to make Glendale a destination is fantastic, and I think it's a big part of what our redevelopment direction is and should be. I think it'll be a terrific southern anchor for the Art and Entertainment District. I support it and thank the staff for working so diligently on this. And I know it was not an easy project to get on, but it's different. It's something we haven't done before. So I'm happy it will be our first downtown museum, hopefully not our last. Thank you all.
Yeah, one, I love the design. I think it's great. That swimmer keister reminded me of Esther Williams. I don't know why. That's the only thing I can think of from the time I saw it the first time. And I like the passageway design. That's the one side of what I have to do. I used to belong to the Glendale Arts Community in Glendale, the oldest in the state of California. We could not get any traction in this city at all, the arts, for display or anything. Nobody wanted to have anything to do with the Glendale Arts Association. Yes, there are a lot of artists, a lot of Hollywood people that live in this city. They're there. I just have a different approach, said it during my campaigning, that I have to consider to be fiscally responsible and act the way I believe. We have the passageway, I call it right now a passageway to nowhere. I've tried to advocate for an underground parking where Central Park is. The Pietro's property is going to need parking. That all goes hand-in-hand in putting a parking structure underground, public parking and private parking combined. And then with the development in the Central Park area, you can develop it so that people that are using the Americana, which I use every week, will want to cross a busy, six-lane Brand Boulevard with high-speeding traffic to go more than just the museum. We're not there yet. I've advocated the passageway, which is great, being simply put in grass to save money for now until we develop out the rest. We have to get rid of the parking, that alley. That's all got to come out someday. That's the future until we have funds to do it. I remember great length to discuss how this chess park, oh, what it was going to do for Glendale. It got awards, everything, and it's empty every single time I go through there, except for some homeless people sitting there eating or sleeping. Now I'm to think that people are going to cross six lanes of Brand to go over and visit the museum on a weekly basis or whatever, because they're sure not going to go by that into an alley. Doesn't make sense. Main problem I have at this time, for over a year, I've been very consistent, want to discuss this in closed session, and want to see the books on Mona. To this day, staff has never provided that to me, and as a councilman, I had a right to expect it. And here it is, the first time in the public, and I'm asked to vote for something, but I didn't get what I asked for many, many times. Mona's getting it lease-free for two years, we're putting a million dollars improvement into it. At the end of fifteen years, six-hundred-and-ninety thousand to the city. Now, I need to know that we're bringing in a viable company, they can be in business, but can they pay the rent, whatever? Numbers have changed from the times I've seen it in closed session on what the rents are going to be. Maybe I just forgot the latest decision on how the rents will be structured over fifteen years. While I love the design, I'm willing to vote for that because I know if something happens with Mona, the property can be reused. Great design. I know the parkway will be great when we have something at the other end to go to. But I have to be consistent with what I've said well over a year in closed session. I see the books. I never have. Now if staff can show me how I can vote on here, these different motions to make sure the building is built, rehabbed, done, I'll do that. Otherwise, I will vote no on every single one of these. You can tell me what I can vote for to rehab the building? Be glad to do that.
I'm going to let you go review those and go to Friedman, and then maybe you can clear up exactly, because it's a series of eight or so motions and resolutions that you...
Would you like me to do that now?
Why don't you hold off, and let's go to Ms. Friedman, and then we'll get your answers.
Thank you. I am going to be supporting this today. I think that Mr. Weaver raises a lot of very valid concerns. I share some of his concerns, but I look at it like this. First of all, we have to remember that this is not general fund money, this is redevelopment money. And what is redevelopment supposed to be for? It's supposed to be for economic development and mostly reducing, removing blight, but also economic development. And I know in the city that we've come to think of our redevelopment agency and of redevelopment as being basically supporting retail. That's been our economic development strategy for many, many years, building the exchange, building the marketplace, investing in the Americana, and all of that's great, but I don't believe that that's a complete, that gives you a complete strategy for economic development. If you think about it, most people do not drive out of their city to go shopping just for the stores. They go there for other reasons as well. I mean, to be really crass about it, it's things that we used to call tourist attractions. And really what this is, you put aside the art part, if you're somebody who just doesn't buy that, who thinks more about the dollars and what we get in the investment for this, we're providing a tourist attraction that hopefully will bring people from other cities into our shopping district, to shop, to eat in the restaurants, to do all of those things, but to have sort of a complete experience and a complete day with their family. And that's what we lack right now in the downtown. So I do think that it's something that's fair to be used under redevelopment. I think it is within that purview. And I do believe that the arts are an essential component of economic vitality for a city. I know people that go to Pasadena quite often from Glendale. They have the same stores here. You know, we can go to Banana Republic in Old Town, or you can go to Banana Republic at the Galleria, but what they get in Pasadena a lot of times is that more complete artistic experience or cultural experience of being able to go to the Norton Simon Museum, to be able to go to the Lemley, which hopefully we'll have here, and do all of those things that are beyond just shopping. So this provides that. And to me, there's sort of two different things, and Mr. Weaver was getting at that. There's two different components to this. One component is investing in our infrastructure here in the city in terms of a building that the agency owns, which is an old dilapidated building that really needs to be renovated if it's going to be good for anything, good for the agency, good for the city. This project does that. It gives us a building that is a very nice design, that retains a lot of the building. It's not a huge investment, but it kind of gives it a facelift, rehabs it enough to where Mona can move in, and if, for whatever, and I hope this doesn't happen, but if Mona doesn't last there, we have an asset that we can really do something with, which we can't do with the building as it exists now. We can rent it out, it can become retail, it can become a civic gallery, it can become many things, but it's something that's worth investing in, because otherwise, it's just a stagnant piece of property that we own, that we're not getting a return on our investment in. It's vacant now. The passageway, I do believe that when the library renovation's complete, and given that I believe that the libraries in the future are going to fulfill an even more important function in this community and in all communities than they do now, I think that passageway could become very important. So I agree, people are not going to be parading across the street to go from the Americana to the Adult Recreation Center necessarily, but it's not, that's not the only thing that's there. We also have a park, a nice-sized park, and we have a library, which for people with children, people who want to have a day downtown with their family, could become very important. So it's kind of that development of an entire civic space, an entire space downtown that gives you that complete experience, education in the library or civic space, community space in the park, retail across the street, and an artistic space in Mona that gives us a much more cohesive and complete downtown. And I believe that all of that is a very fair way to invest redevelopment dollars. Now, I do agree with Mr. Weaver that we maybe need to get a more complete financial picture of Mona before investing that million dollars, but I think that there's a way of today, moving forward with the project with the renovations and all of that, and making that additional allowance, million-dollar allowance contingent on having the council and the agency's questions about Mona's ability to be a viable tenant answered as that project moves forward. I would support doing that if that makes Mr. Weaver feel more comfortable, and I know it would make me feel more comfortable as well. Because Mona at some point does have to pay rent, and, you know, it would be good to be, if we're going to make that investment in their space in terms of that million dollars, I think it's reasonable to expect that we can see some sort of indication. And I know that we've had some from the staff, but maybe seeing something that's more complete would make everybody feel more comfortable, and I would support that. And lastly, I would like to thank Mr. Drayman for bringing this forward. It's sort of that big idea that is difficult to bring forward, because it's easy to take potshots at the... potshots at the big ideas, but they're the ones that, I think, tend to pay off the best in the long run. So I think this is a really exciting project. It is the potential to really change our downtown, to bring something to Glendale that we've never had before, and to really add to the economic vitality of our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let me go to our city attorney, and I guess the question is, you want to vote for the, well, you heard Mr. Weaver, so why don't you explain it and perhaps-
I did. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair members of the city council and agency, the non-lease-related items would be at 2C and D. E is the motion approving Stage 1 and 2 design review. That would be for the building. And C is assigned variance specifically related to this, although it is to this use. D is assigned variance.
Okay, yeah.
And C, I'm sorry, my voice is a little rough. C is exactly the design.
Question, on the other ones that are the lease-related, what are they? No, no, resolutions and motions. On those, rather than having an up or down vote, would Mr. Weaver be satisfied with conditioning those so that, you know, if we are as a group satisfied as to the financial stability of Mona, that they would then move forward?
I wanted to be back here.
So that would be a continuance.
Or a continuance.
I want to sit back here if you're trying to get me to buy in.
Van Myn.
I would, just in case it hasn't been already drawn to the agency's attention, draw the agency's attention to 33433 report, Kaiser Marston's memorandum, which is analysis of the fair reuse value of the site and Mona's ability to pay either fair market rental value or fair reuse, fair lease value, something less than would be the fair lease value for the site. As part of that analysis, Kaiser Marston and Associates, on page 2 of that report, Exhibit 2, was provided with Mona's audited financial statements from their previous year's operations and reviewed projections of those operations at the Glendale location. And based on that, had determined that they would, plus with their programming associated with the facility, determined that it was their ability both to pay the structure set forth in the lease, which would be some lease abatement during the initial years, starting at $2,500 per month and ramping up to $5,000 a month at year 6, and that in order to bring the site to, into usable form, that some expenditure would be necessary, as would be normal with a landlord and tenant, to provide accommodations in the site. So another point related to the million dollars, I think that I didn't hear Emile mention specifically, is this is up to $1 million. It does not necessarily mean that the, we'll be spending that full million dollars. It is certainly possible that those required upgrades that were identified by the project architect would be somewhat less than that, and I know both Mark Berry and Emile could elaborate further, but I did want to bring that to the agency.
Do we get to, does anybody, does the agency or do the staff review and approve those, how that allowance is spent?
I believe the ground lease requires them to present, they are currently working on drafting this, basically the TI, the tenant improvement plans, which would give the museum a better understanding of their cost impacts. At some point, the lease requires them to present those for agency review at the staff level, not necessarily at a public presentation, but at a staff level prior to the issuance of the up to a million-dollar allowance.
So if the preference is that as much of the money as possible is spent on upgrades that would kind of live with the building for a while?
Right.
We would have some way of sort of prioritizing those?
And again, the priority would be to structurally and improve the systems of the building first to the extent that's possible, that has a more of an adaptable and flexible reuse versus improvements that are specific to the museum's purposes.
Okay, so Ms. Van Myn, you're-
I guess pointing to the conclusion of page 3 where it says that based on the projections, Mona should be able to afford to pay the $357,000 in rent through the first 10 years.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I'm glad Jillian brought that up, because I was going to also respond if she hadn't. Let me, if I can, let me just read that brief paragraph in Kaiser Marston's analysis, because you recall, "We took some extra care and time to assist Mona in developing the projections to respond to Mr. Weaver's concerns." So let me, let me make a note of the Kaiser Marston again. KMA, which is Kaiser Marston, "Has reviewed Mona audited financial statements for previous year's operations, and Kaiser Marston reviewed projections of Mona operations at a Glendale location. The operating projections take into account the obligations contained in the lease. The operating projections provided by Mona were consistent with their actual operations in previous years, so we made sure they weren't somehow overextending themselves in future years. Based on previous preliminary analysis that was prepared by KMA, the operating projections appear achievable. The KMA projection of operating revenues and expenses is shown in Table 1. This table projects operating revenues and expenses over the initial 15-year term of the lease. The revenues from the special events, cruises and classes that are obligations of the lease are shown in those respective revenue lines. Class revenue is projected to be $12,000 a year, and they go into some of the numbers. These expenses for these activities were not separately set out in the operating statements." So their conclusion is that indeed they believe, based on the, both their historical operations and the reasonable projections in the future, that they will be able to meet the operating obligations under the lease based on their audited financial statements and the projections. So, Ms. Weaver, I apologize if we, I think we thought we were getting there with what you wanted by without having you or me look at their actual financial statements, have KMA analyze them and do the projections and give us their assessment of whether or not they would be able to meet their obligations on the lease.
That should have been provided to me a long time before now. I've asked for over a year. I'm looking in here on the same lady you're talking about. This is here. Their operating surplus projected at $10,000 year 1, up to $79,000. These projections do not include any allowance for rent or for operating and capital reserves. Even in the Alex Theater, we're looking for them to bill at the reserves, which they're doing. KMA believes that a prudent nonprofit would target a minimum of 3%, perhaps as much as 5% of total revenues as a reserve for capital replacement and operating deficits. Now, they can go on the conclusion. If I'd had this a month ago, I could have sat with staff, had all my questions answered, and got comfortable. Fortunately, it gets dumped on me over the weekend, and I haven't got the answers. So you have four votes. Mr. Quintero has been fully in support of this in closed session. You got the four votes. Why not cut to the chase and vote? I'll vote for these two here that do the structural improvements.
I might point out, as I understand, all of the actions today, whether city or agency, require a maximum of three votes.
That's right.
I think there was some feeling originally that some of these actions may require four. There was some reference in the staff report at one point to four votes being required, but I think they're all three votes.
So the public knows, if it had required four votes, I was going to vote for it today. Because Mr. Quintero's gone, and I knew he supported it, I was on a four-to-one loss. So I was going to support it because of that. Now told it's three, then I can express what I truly believe at this point in time. And I hope it's very successful. I really do.
Well, is there an opportunity for Mr. Weaver to sit down with staff and ask those questions if this has continued a week?
Can, after fact, but the vote will be today. Like I said, I'll support C and D.
With the threat of the state, we are trying to proceed and get these actions in place, and the state is continuing to lay their actions in the budget. So time is of the essence, but we're more than happy to tell Mr. Weaver and see if we can provide him with some comfort irrespective of the vote here today.
Show me the books. Do you want a motions, Mr. Mayor?
Well, wait, just, I'm going to move the item. Let's see where it goes. Do I understand from the housekeeping information that 2A, C, E, F, and H are, can be taken together, or, I mean, they're all agency items, but can they all be taken together?
Yes, they're agency resolutions and motions. That would be 2A, C, D, F, and H.
And then B, E, and G are council items, resolutions.
Correct.
All three of those be taken together?
Yes, they may.
And I'm going to move for the agency items 2A, C, D, F, and H.
If I ask these to be taken one at a time?
Oh, well, that's what I was just asking.
Well, A, C, D, and E.
You would like them separately. Okay, all right. Then let me, let me move item 2A for the agency.
Give a second.
Well, this is for the agency. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Agency members, Draymond.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero, Weaver.
No.
Chair Friedman.
Yes.
Okay. Item 2C for the-
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Agency members, Draymond.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero, Weaver.
Hi.
Chair Friedman.
Yes.
Item 2, I'm trying to read my own notes. E for the agency.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Agency members, Draymond.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero, Weaver.
Hi.
Chair Friedman.
Yes.
Item 2F for the-
Second.
Agency members, Draymond.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero, Weaver.
No.
Chair Friedman.
Yes.
Lastly, item 2H, that's the agency resolution.
Second.
Agency members, Draymond.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero, Weaver.
No.
Chair Friedman.
So we have for council then-
E, E.
B, E, and G.
B, E, and G.
Someone move those.
Yes, and is there a desire that they be taken separately?
No, we, C and D have already been voted. Those are the two that do the structural improvements.
B, E, and G. Right, then items 2B, E, and G for the council.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero, Weaver.
No.
Chair Najarian.
Then we have 3A, and I just, I just want to make a statement that, that lady hasn't sung yet, if you pardon the idiom. If the state takes away redevelopment funds, takes away prospectively and/or retroactively, we're going to face some challenges with this project. So we are all, you know, keep the champagne on ice or keep the neon in the pressure tank for now, because we just don't know what's going to happen. And a lot of our uncertainty and a lot of our, you know, the apprehension that you see up here as the council and the agency is not knowing what's going to happen. Is this going to be the very last dollar of our redevelopment money that we can spend? Or is this going to be taken away from us if we do make a appropriation?
On that note, a little editorial. If you're watching this meeting, if you're sitting in this audience, if you think Mona and its relocation to Glendale and the investment here is a good thing, you should be speaking to your state senator and assembly member and asking them to support at least the California Redevelopment Association proposal for continuing redevelopment.
Move on to the next item, please.
Free Director of Community Development Regarding East Side Grand Boulevard Improvement Project Schematic Design and the Pedestrian Passage and Alley Parking Lot Improvement at 3A's Agency Motion Directing Staff to Proceed with the Design and Development Phase.
What we just heard, was it not-
I just want to check, Mr. Mayor, with staff again, along with C and D. Am I voting for this too, for the?
Mr. Weaver, this is for the approval, next phase of the design of the passageway, so not related to the lease.
Right, I want to make sure. Okay.
Can we have a motion, please?
I'll move it for the agency.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Agency members, Draymond.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero, Weaver.
Hi.
Chair Friedman.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, let's, I did have a card from De Pietro. You still like to address us? I'll take a motion to reconsider. Your motion?
I'll move, Mr. Mayor.
Second, with no objection, the item is back on the table.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Dennis De Pietro. My family owns the property south of what will potentially be the passageway down to Colorado Boulevard, and just wanted to make mention of something that council member Weaver said, mentioned about the chess park. And one of the failures of the chess park has been, in fact, that it is a narrow space that is bounded by tall buildings on either side. First, I'd like to laud the staff for moving this forward from what began as the town center project, and, but a couple of the design objectives. One is the issue of retaining a substantial portion of parking, and it seems in talking with staff that there will probably be a net loss of about 30 parking spaces, which is a significant number. But the other design objective is, the design also provides opportunity for the southerly property to extend the activities into the passageway, and that's us. And just like to make note that we really strenuously object to the idea of building the 10-foot wood wall along the south property line. We have a permit in hand and are moving forward with a major renovation of that building, and part of that renovation will include the removal of about 1,100, 1,200 square feet of building in the back in order to not only develop six code parking spaces, but also add landscaping back there and an area for patio. And we indicated to staff that it seemed like it was very important to link the back of that building, the, we're going to be replacing, process, exterior stair, that would be brought in internal. The storefronts would be consistent with the front of the building. We would be replacing all the windows on the second floor to be more historically sympathetic to what the building looked like originally, doing a number of things to make that building a really significant little piece of, in the component of that east side of Grand Boulevard. And we see that that 10-foot wood wall is, you know, we have to wonder, well, why should we even do that if the, if the design is going to literally continue that narrow alley approach like chess park? It seems like there's an opportunity here for all of us to open that space back up. My time is up.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. De Pietro, I didn't see any fits, except on this sketch here. I didn't find anywhere else in the plans. Maybe it's there and I missed it, but-
Yeah, there's a, there's a 10-foot high wood.
The point is that during one of the presentations, it talked about outdoor dining along that side.
Right.
So I presume that it was in conjunction with any development you would do, would open up onto that area.
Right, and obviously there would have to be-
I don't know why put up a 10-foot wall if you're going to eliminate fall out. Now, the question is, are you going to do it next year or 10 years from now?
Whether we're going to do it?
Yeah, when?
Oh, well, we have to, we have to start construction within 180 days. We've got a permit in hand. We're moving forward.
Oh, you're ready to construct?
Oh, we're, we're moving ahead with that.
Are you going to, I haven't seen any plans or anything. Are you going to be opening up onto that plaza or that walkway area?
Well, we went in actually with plans showing openings in that plaza. Building Department wouldn't allow it, so they suggested that we eliminate that component until the agency determines that you're going to move ahead. Then we'll have to go back and we'll have to amend our permit, allowing those openings. And we're fine with putting in those openings, which makes sense for all of us. We want to make that passageway as dynamic as possible. But the issue is, we have about 60 feet behind that building that will be landscaped, will have a patio, and will have parking, and what we're asking the agency is to really rethink this whole idea of building basically a wall 10 feet high from the back of our building all the way to the property line.
You're in essence already to pull the permit.
We already, we already-
You don't need to come to the agency or the council for anything, right?
Well, we already got agency staff approval for the project, and we're moving ahead.
You didn't need, you didn't need our approval?
Didn't need to come to you.
No.
That's why you're doing it, okay.
We're not asking for anything. We just want to get it done.
Okay, can someone, thank you, Mr. De Pietro. Mr. Tattavoshin, can you address the issue of the fence and as it relates to any future development on the- development on the immediately-
Absolutely. Mr. Di Pietro brings up a very good point. In terms of the TI plans that they have submitted, given that the building department has to look at the existing conditions, and the subject property is still occupied by another building, they cannot be plan-checking a plan that is looking at an existing building next door. As such, openings into another existing building are not allowed. But potentially, when the project moves forward, and that property, the subject property is dedicated as a public right-of-way, at that point, those plans need to be reevaluated, and the doors are allowed by the building code to be, to open into the public right-of-way. However, we are working very closely with the building department so that as they're plan-checking the current plans, they are aware of the future desire of the property owner to open into the passageway. In terms of-
I was just going to say, Dennis, which comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Well, right now, they are moving forward at a pace that is faster than our project is moving forward. Given the building department has to look at the existing conditions, they cannot approve openings into a building that is still standing.
I understand.
But in terms of the 10-foot wall that Dennis, wow. I think I can handle the 10-foot wall. But in terms of the 10-foot wall, based on the initial plans that Mr. Di Pietro had presented to staff during the design process, they are proposing to remove the, there's an existing building without having aerials, and I have to point to, potentially, this is the wall that we are talking about. There's an existing single-story building right behind the double-story volume here. That building is going to be demolished and replaced with surface parking. Given the desire to protect the pedestrian edge, this wall is being proposed. However, that wall allows for openings into the exit into the Pietro-owned property.
May I suggest you just put up a plywood fence?
It's not a plywood fence.
No, that's all you need, if you're going to do construction.
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Starberg?
Is it fair to say that we'll have our design staff get with Mr. Di Pietro and make sure that these two plans, his plans and our plans, are adequately coordinated?
Thank you.
Rather than designing them here, I'm not sure what he has plans or what we've seen, but certainly before we proceed with this design, we need to make sure we understand what his design is and what his interests are, and to the extent we can, we try to accommodate those.
Okay.
Yeah, the issue is that the 10-foot wall is to separate the walking area from surface parking. That would be, from an urban design standpoint, unacceptable for us to have surface parking there, and we will work that out.
Absolutely.
If they change their design in such a way that we don't have parking next to the opening, we can-
I understand, Mr. Di Pietro indicated he wanted to create some area for parking of about six cars and also a patio potentially for dining. Not knowing how all of those are going to relate, I think we just need to have our planning staff and Mr. Di Pietro and his design get together.
This is raising more-
And fort that stuff out.
That's where I was going, what I was going to prove with.
Thank you. I have no other cards.
Can I just say that as it relates to what, this big investment that we're about to make with the passeo, I would not like to see staff approving things like a surface parking lot next to this passeo without it coming to the agency. Because I don't know exactly how it fits in with whatever they're doing, but that's a very disturbing concept to me.
Yes. I'll remove item-
We'll look at that, too.
3A for the agency.
I'll second. I don't know, with direction of staff?
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Agency members, Drayman?
Yes.
Najarain?
Yes.
Quintero?
Weaver?
Hi.
Chair Friedman?
Yes.
Move to adjourn for the agency.
Second.